1:30 for the regular meeting.
As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oaks.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Doll.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
All members are present.
All right, thank you. I ask the city manager Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members Mead and Doll are participating on the Zoom platform. And we're also joined on the Zoom platform by Jonathan Akawi, representing Caliber Collision in connection with the land use matters that are on council's agenda.
All right, thank you. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During public hearings towards the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone at the appropriate time may call 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619-358 hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public is a time for councils simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation of certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances, makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city council ordinance 2020 dash zero four regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v a.us backslash C O G O R D 2020 dash zero four, as extended by city council ordinance number 2021 dash oh six. All right. Once again, I would like to remind everyone to please wear your mask when in City Hall and in the chambers. Outside the entrance of the chambers, we have hand sanitizer. We also have next to the podium some sanitizing wipes if you would care to use those when you come to the podium. And we also ask that you recognize social distancing. With the city council members, I would ask that if you would like to be recognized, please recognize the mayor and I will recognize you so you can ask your questions or make your comments. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would care to do so, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the invocation moment of silence. And tonight, our invocation or moment of silence will be given by council member Carolyn Doll.
Thank you. I gave some thought to what I wanted to do this evening and I don't want to have a prayer that would exclude any member of our city. But I think we could have a moment of silence and reflect on the fact that I believe we're coming into a new day, that we're now starting to hold people accountable for their misdeeds, for lying, for stealing, and for not working for the betterment of our country, whether that's local, state, or national. And I feel like a new day is dawning. And I believe that when the trial for George Floyd is finished, he will be found guilty, as he should be, and we can start on the path of having true equality for all of our citizens. So please, take a moment of silence at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is the mayor's report. I would like to start off by reading a proclamation concerning Child Abuse Prevention Month. City of Stanton, Virginia proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2021. Whereas, preventing child abuse and neglect is a solution that requires involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas, child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas, in 2020, there were 151 valid reports of child abuse or neglect in the city of Stanton. And whereas, there are 54 Stanton children currently in foster care. And whereas, the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas, all citizens should be involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. And there are 53 foster adoptive families in our area. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among Shenandoah Valley Social Services, the Valley Children's Advocacy Center, Blue Ridge Court-appointed special advocates, the Central Shenandoah Valley Office on Youth, Schools, Faith Communities, Civic Organizations, Law Enforcement Agencies, and the Business Community. And now therefore be proclaimed by Stanton City Council that April 2021 is hereby designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month. The city of Stanton and the Stanton City Council calls upon all citizens individually and through organizations with which they are affiliated to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, adopted this eighth day of April 2021. Andrea Oaks, Mayor. All right, let's see. Amber Martino, the Child Protective Service Supervisor in Shenandoah Valley Social Services. Hi, welcome. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Would you like to say a few words about Child Abuse Prevention Month?
Yes, great. Thank you guys so much for having us. So, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and the purpose is to increase awareness, not only of the abuse or neglect that is occurring, but also to be mindful of all of the measures and services that we can put in place to strengthen the families that we're working with and to help them keep their children safe in their families, in our localities where they're at, where they feel at home, where their supports are. So, just to kind of give you guys a little brief overview of some statistics, in 2020, there were 734 validated cases, which means there were 734 reports that were received that we looked into for child abuse or neglect via a family assessment or an investigation, and that's in the state and Augusta and Waynesboro area. And in 2020, there were, I know there were 235 children that received services through the Valley Children's Advocacy Center, and that's to be through forensic interviewing or counseling and advocacy program they have there. And in, currently in Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County, we have 133 children in foster care. And again, that number is actually a lot lower than it's been traditionally in the past. And I think it's because we really are trying to be as proactive as possible about keeping children safe with family members or putting in services into their homes to make sure that if there was risk for future abuse or neglect, that it's mitigated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
It's my understanding Rebecca Simmons, that you would like to say a few words that you are the Director of the Valley Children's Advocacy Center.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us. I just wanted to thank you for introducing the proclamation this evening, but also more importantly, for your unwavering support to the survivors served by our child-serving organizations, including Valley Children's Advocacy Center, our local CPS, Office on Youth, CASA. I know many of you have visited our organization, the Children's Advocacy Center, and know firsthand the impactful services that we offer along with our partner organizations, and just how we are working tirelessly to seek healing and justice for those children impacted by child sexual abuse. I know Councilwoman Doll and Councilwoman Mead, as well as Councilwoman Darby, have all been there, Madam Mayor, you as well. And even Vice Mayor Robertson serves on our Board of Directors. And I just think that that, that your presence at our organization and even as part of our leadership, just sends a message to our community of what an important issue this is in our community. So I truly thank you for that. I always say that child abuse is a community problem. In order to make meaningful changes, it requires a community solution. And so, I just thank you for having us this evening, acknowledging that it's an issue, an issue a lot of times that folks don't feel comfortable talking about or acknowledging exists in our community. And so I appreciate that very much. One last thing I wanted to share, we are having an outreach event, actually this month for Child Abuse Prevention Month, our very first event. It's called Save Jane. And I will send you all information on the event. It's April 24th at Gypsy Hill Park, and it's going to be from noon until roughly six or seven o'clock in the evening. And it's just an event, very impactful, where we will actually read the names of the 3,000 children in our community who recently, there was an allegation of child abuse or neglect. Because we can't say their actual names, then they will be referred to as Jane Doe and John Doe. And so, community members from across Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro will be reading those names for as long as it takes. If my math is right, it's about six or seven hours. But we think that it will be a very impactful event and would certainly welcome you all to attend that as well, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you, Ms. Simmons. All right, Jenny Newman, with, you are the Executive Director of Office on Youth. Welcome, Ms. Newman.
Thank you. Thank you for having us, and thank you again for recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's important to include, as these ladies have said, all of the community agencies, which I'm here to help represent. There are multiple youth-serving agencies in the area, the YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Club, our office that connects in multiple ways and provides additional services to help prevent ongoing neglect or abuse. Our parenting classes are referred to often from social services and the courts, but also from the schools as a prevention. And last year, we served 189 parents. And that was, excuse me, that was through COVID. So that number again was down because we had to actually take a break. The courts took a break, referrals were not coming in. Once we went virtual, our classes have filled right up. There's a definite need, there's a definite stress that parents are currently feeling, and it is going to take all of the community agencies together to help prevent any future or ongoing abuse and neglect in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you, Ms. Newman. I would like to say that I am glad that we are dedicating an entire month to child abuse prevention. It's very sad that we have to have this dedication, but in the same token, I'm glad that we are recognizing such a horrific crime against our most vulnerable, our children. I have the fancy copy of the proclamation. I would like to present it. Could we have additional copies made? Thank you for coming out. And we'll make sure that Ms. Simmons and Ms. Newman will, we'll give you each a copy as well. But thank you for everything you do for our children in the community. All right, so the next item on the mayor's report, I would like to, already go. Oh, he just left. I was going to recognize our school board member Ron Ramsey, but I think he walked out with the folks from the Children's Advocacy Center. All right, the next item for the mayor's report, I wanted to let everyone know that the five localities that are being affected by the jail expansion issue, we met, we are calling it the Mayors and Chairs Committee. All the mayors and the chairs came together this past Tuesday to discuss which direction we would like to go as far as the Middle River Regional Jail. We do not have any answers at this point. However, we would like to look into the idea of having a lobbyist to represent the five communities. So we're going to be working with the Virginia Municipal League to see if we can have a lobbyist at the state level, the DOC, to see if we can have some, some of the laws changed and to see what we can do to receive some help from the state. We're also considering a resolution to be passed by all five localities, one that we all agree upon, and we're hoping that other localities throughout the state of Virginia will be willing to join us in this resolution because Middle River Regional Jail affects the entire state of Virginia. So we're in the beginning stages of meeting. We'll be, we will be meeting again on April 20th, so we're hoping to have further direction. All right, with that, are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilmember Mead.
I'd like to add that on Monday, April 4th, April 4th, excuse me, I attended a small committee of SDVA representatives in, at an Economic Vitality Committee, and the goal of the committee is to come up with solutions and ways to get visitors to enjoy all of the shops and restaurants in the greater downtown area, including the Worth area and other off Beverly Street businesses and restaurants. And they're coming up with a list of solutions and action items to accomplish that objective. It was a good meeting. And I'd also like to add with respect to the Middle River Jail that I would hope that those mayors getting together to discuss the Middle River Jail would also have on their agenda the, the, a proposal to study or bring, bring those that are involved with the justice community together to determine solutions other than expanding the jail. I think that has been missing in this process. An architectural firm was hired to come up with solutions, and of course, you get a brick and mortar solution when you do that. So I think stepping back and reexamining the issues facing those involved with the justice community and letting them come up with some solutions would be helpful in this process. So I would hope that, that you would bring that forward, Mayor Oaks.
Thank you.
In your activity with that group.
I certainly will, thank you. And I did want to mention that the localities, of course, the city of Stanton, the city of Waynesboro, Augusta County, the city of Harrisonburg, and Rockingham County. All right, are there any additional items by members of council? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of March 25th, 2021. Councilmember Holmes.
I move to approve the work session agenda, I mean, the regular meeting and work session agenda.
Minutes. The minutes. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of March 25th, 2021. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'd like.
Councilmember Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. If our clerk of council will call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget work session of April 1st, 2021. Councilmember Holmes.
I move to approve the budget session of April 1st. As presented.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget work session minutes of April 1st, 2021. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. The next item on the regular meeting is item A, a public hearing in consideration of an amendment to allow automobile body repair as a use permitted on review in the B2 General Business District. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Rodney Rhodes, the city's senior planner, will present this item.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. As the mayor noted in the introduction to this item, this is a request to allow automobile body repair in the B2 General Business District. It currently is only allowed in the industrial districts in the city. And a couple of months ago, Representative Caliber Collision contacted the planning office inquiring about opening up automobile body repair shop at 1310 Barterbrook Road, which is the former Elliott Collision Center. As I'm sure council members know, that center has been closed for approximately five years. It was considered non-conforming, and as stated in the city code and the state code, a non-conforming property loses its legal right if it discontinues for a period of two, more than two years. So it lost its non-conforming status. The applicant asked, well, how could we reopen that as a collision center? Staff worked with them to, to come up with a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow that in the B2 district. That went before the Plan Commission in February of 2021. At that meeting, the Plan Commission formally directed staff to work on an amendment and to schedule for public hearing. They did have some concerns about allowing this, you know, in all B2 property, therefore they requested staff to advertise that as a right by special use permit. They also had some concerns about screening, about parking surface, compatibility with surrounding uses, and outdoor lighting. Staff worked with the applicant to come up with the amendment, proposed amendment before you tonight. If you look at what was originally presented by the applicant and what, it evolved quite a bit over that month to something that we thought the Plan Commission and the city would, would approve. And at its March 18th, 2021 meeting, Plan Commission conducted a public hearing. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the amendment, and on a 4 to 0 vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment. I would note that although this was brought before the city by one particular business, this would, if it is adopted, all businesses in the B2 district would have the right to apply for a special use permit for something similar. And just so happens that in the past week or two, an existing non-conforming business in the city is looking to expand. And if this amendment is adopted, they may be coming before you in a couple of months with a special use permit. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct a public hearing.
Are there any questions at this time? Councilmember Holmes.
Is it the, the other business that you're talking about also a collision, or is it just something that's similar? Since we don't have a formal application yet, we've only had some phone calls, it would, it would not be a direct, it's not a direct competitor with the Caliber Collision, but it would meet the definition that has been drafted and advertised for tonight as far as the proposed uses that would be allowed there.
All right, we're going to go ahead and have a public hearing. I will bang the gavel. If anyone would like to come to the podium or to call in to speak for or against this measure, feel free. Once I bang the gavel again, that'll close the public hearing out, and we will entertain a vote. Mr. Rosenberg, you're pointing your finger at me.
Madam Mayor, I would just remind you that a representative of the applicant is on the Zoom platform, so when you open the public hearing, you may wish to invite him to make comments.
All right, sounds good. All right, with that, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Rosenberg, would you like to invite him?
Mr. Akawi, and I'm, I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly, but would you like to address any comments to council?
You absolutely pronounced it correctly, so I appreciate that. I think, yeah, I think we've, we've obviously gone over quite a bit over the last two meetings and planning sessions, but I'll just say briefly that, you know, we are definitely looking forward to the potential of joining the Stanton community. We plan on construction budget, or I shouldn't say construction, but interior renovation budget of around $550,000, you know, replacing the roof, adding different equipment, adding some facade improvements, and jobs, probably there'll be about 10 to 15 full-time employees working at this site. Caliber does extensive training for all of their center managers and assistant managers. They have a team of about 11,000 people now. They're headquartered out of Texas, and any full-time managers and assistant managers have extensive training and also often get sent to the headquarters in Dallas for a week-long leadership training. You know, that may or may not be happening these days, but they also have a program that supports veterans coming out of the service. They have a number of outreach programs. So I think, I think, you know, we've, we've obviously covered everything. If there are any questions, I'm happy to address them, but given the, the way that the code's written, the way that the new code is proposed, I don't see us having any issues meeting any of the requirements and abiding by those moving forward.
Right. Did any council members have any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Mr. Akawi, just to, if this is approved tonight, how long would it take you? When do you foresee actually being open for business?
If it's approved tonight, we will close on the property within 30 days, and we would like to be operating by July.
All right.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg, do you see any other callers?
So we do have people, and as we discussed previously, we'll see whether they're calling to address this matter, and if not, we'll place them back in the queue.
Yes, I would just like to say. Yes, I would just like to say we are going to handle each public hearing individually. So if everyone can bear with us, we're going to have to go through the queue. All right, go ahead, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. Can the caller please say whether they're calling to address the proposed zoning amendment? Let's move on to the next one, please. The caller whose number ends in 54, are you calling to address the proposed zoning amendment?
No.
We'll come back to you, thank you. The caller whose number ends in 73, are you calling to address the proposed zoning amendment?
No.
We'll come back to you, thank you. That's all we have, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Would anyone in the audience care to speak concerning this matter? Right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Council member Darby.
I move that council approve the amendment to Chapter 18.60 of the zoning code to allow automobile body repair in the B2 General Business District with a special use permit as recommended by the Planning Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a second by council member Holmes. Any further discussion? Hearing none. If the clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. That leads us to item number B, a public hearing in consideration of a request for special use permit to allow automobile body repair at 1310 Barterbrook Road. Mr. Rosenberg, Mr. Rosenberg, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rhodes will present this item as well.
Thank you. Once again, obviously, this is the corresponding special use permit for this specific location for automobile body repair at 1310 Barterbrook Road. As previously noted, this was the former location of Elliott Collision Center. Staff has reviewed the request at this particular site and has not identified any issues that cannot be resolved with appropriate conditions. The property is adjacent to a pharmacy. It's near the intersection of Barterbrook Road and Greenville Avenue. The property is very close to the city Augusta County boundary. So staff reached out to the county to see if they had any comments about the proposal, and they had no comments or concerns. All surrounding zoning property in the city is on B2 General Business District. The adjoining zoning in the county includes General Business and multifamily, which I believe is the old Stanton Shopping Center that was recently rezoned. And as far as, there are six criteria in the amendment that you just adopted that these type of operations or applications would be reviewed under. And under the first one, that the site does not have adequate screening at this time. However, the applicant is willing to do that, and staff recommends that as a condition of approval. Item number two, the current parking lot. And ingress and egress is a sealed surface, so it meets that condition. The third one is the applicant has noted his intent to store automobile, all automobile parts within the building, and staff recommends that is a condition of approval. The fourth one, the proposed use is compatible with surrounding commercial uses. The fifth one, none of the adjacent property is owned residential. There is one single-family house that straddles the border between the city and the county. However, that is owned commercial in both jurisdictions, so that is nonconforming. And as far as exterior lighting, the current lighting does not meet the condition in this amendment. However, the applicant is willing to, and plans to replace the existing fixtures that will meet the current standards, and staff once again recommends that as a condition of approval. And at the March 18th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, the commission considered this request. There, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and neither did city staff receive any opposition to this request from the required legal advertisements or all the adjoining property owner notifications. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the Plan Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of special use permit with the following conditions. One, adequate ornamental fencing or accommodation of fencing and evergreen planting shall be provided. Two, all automobile parts must be stored within an enclosed building. Three, lighting shall be wholly contained within the site and shall not shine or reflect on the public right of way or adjoining properties, and all exterior lights shall be full cutoff. And then, four, failure to comply with these conditions will result in immediate revocation of the special use permit. I'd be glad to take any questions council has at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Are there any questions at this time? Right, I'm hearing none. I will go ahead and bang the gavel. Just like before, we'll have another public hearing. If you want to speak for or against this matter, feel free. Once I hit the gavel a second time, that'll close the public hearing out, and I'll entertain a motion. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Rosenberg, do we have anyone?
Before we go to the calls, let me just see if Mr. Akawi wishes to address the special use permit public hearing at all.
Thank you.
Um, no, no, I think you guys have covered it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll check with the callers now. The caller whose number ends in 88, are you calling to address the special use permit? Go on to the next one, please. Is the caller whose number ends in 54 calling to address the special use permit?
No.
We'll come back to you, thank you. There are no other callers, Madam Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council concerning this matter? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Council member Mead.
Yeah, I move that council approve the special use permit for 1310 Barterbrook Road with the conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'll second.
Right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. So the next item is item C, a public hearing of an ordinance to establish a budget for FY 2022. This is July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Trayer, the city's CFO, will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we were here for a public hearing on the FY 2022 budget ordinance, which was introduced to council on March 25th, 2021. This public hearing was properly advertised on April 1st in the news leader. It totals 131,353,000 and consists of the following. General fund, 61,969. Debt service, 5,683,000. CIP fund, 981,000. Blue Ridge Court Services, 1,229,000. Water fund, 11,596,000. That does include $7 million for the Garden of Springs project. Sewer fund, 3,957,000. Parking, 512,000. Stormwater fund, 1,656,000. Environmental fund, 3,252,000. Education fund, 35,253,000. Cafeteria fund, 1,696,000. Textbook fund, 276,000. School CIP, 100,000, and school state operated program of 1,000,031,890,000. This ordinance includes a real estate tax decrease of two cents, which lowers the tax rate from 95 cents per $100 of assessed value to 93 cents per $100 of assessed value. Once again, it is important to note that while the actual rate has decreased, in reality, this does increase the effective rate by 5 cents per $100 of assessed value as the equalized rate calculated as a result to the increase in assessments equals 88 cents per $100 of assessed value. Other tax rates include personal property remains unchanged at 290, business tangible property unchanged at 290, machinery and tools unchanged at 124. Budget also includes water fund rates, no change, sewer fund rates, no change, environmental fund rates, no change, parking fund rates, no change. Council's free to adjust proposed budget as it sees fit. We have another budget work session scheduled for April 15th, and the budget is scheduled for approval on April 22nd. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Right. Are there any questions from Mr. Trayer? It looks like, Mr. Rosenberg, do you have a question?
I have a comment to make, Madam Mayor, just a clarification, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Trayer, who I believe noted a rate of 93 cents per 100. I believe we actually advertised a 95 cent rate, but the proposed, and and the, and the ordinance. I guess this is a question for Mr. Trayer. Does the ordinance actually include the 95 cent rate or the 93 cent rate?
93 cent rate.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions?
This is Carolyn Doll.
Council member Doll.
The, that means we can go up but not past 95. That's why it gets advertised that way, correct?
True.
All right, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we will have a public hearing. I will bang the gavel. If anyone would like to speak concerning the budget, any comments at all for or against, or if you would like to just make any general comments, please feel free. Once I bang the gavel a second time, that'll end the public hearing, and we will not be taking a vote on the budget tonight. This is simply a public hearing. With that, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Rosenberg.
We have three callers, it appears, Madam Mayor.
Okay, can you ask them if they would like to speak, please?
Are you, is the caller whose number, whose number ends in 88 calling to address the budget ordinance?
No.
We'll come back to you. Is the caller whose number ends in 54 calling to address the budget ordinance?
No.
Thank you. Is the caller whose number ends in 73 calling to address the budget ordinance?
No.
Thank you. We have, it looks like that's all the callers.
All right, thank you. Would anyone from the audience like to speak? Hi, welcome. If you can state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Nitch Narduzi, South Jefferson Street. I'm here to express my concern over council members who ran as fiscal conservatives, yet pretend to propose tax cuts while they actually nickel and dime Stanton citizens and behave if they are on some kind of spending spree that includes parades, personal lawyer fees, unnecessary security services provided by the sheriff's office, golf court, golf carts, and course improvements, and a potential jail expansion. I cannot express to our community members enough how dangerous the financial impact of council decisions can be. Proposed golf course improvements alone warrant the need for an additional one-cent increase in taxes, and the proposed jail expansion would require an outrageous hike to taxes. Yet the vice mayor has suggested that the city try to fund their projects and essential services by decreasing the tax rate another two cents. The fiscal logic behind these priorities are asinine and will result in additional unfunded projects that are intended to serve all of Stanton's citizens. Unfunded projects that would support our laboratory, our police, park maintenance, community cultural contributions, a public works request for necessary new equipment, and as we heard earlier, our children and our schools. Again, the majority of city council have shown us that their priorities do not include adopting an annual budget and setting tax levels to fund maintenance of the city infrastructure, schools, public safety, and other functions in fiscally responsible ways, which is their official job. Instead, the majority four has asked city staff to try and balance the budget in a way that will cut funds to essential services to the point of having to dismantle current budget items so that they can pay for their personally preferred pet projects. Regardless of your stance on the effectiveness of incarceration as a tool for public safety, every citizen should be concerned about the burgeoning cost of the Middle River Regional Jail. Our community's reliance on mass incarceration as a punitive criminal justice model is not only outdated and statistically ineffective, it is also unsustainable. Additional operational costs for the Middle River Regional Jail has increased over half a million dollars. And this does not even include any of the proposed costs associated with an expansion, which will require millions more of taxpayer dollars. So while I am encouraged to hear that local municipality mayors have met to discuss this issue, thank you for doing that, I actually encourage you to not continue the process in your bubble of privilege, but to purposely bring in other advocates, justice-involved persons, criminal justice reform experts. There's a saying amongst justice-involved people that there should be no decision about us without us. So unless you're including all voices at the table, your decisions will still be harmful to our community. So please take that into consideration as you continue forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak concerning this matter? Mr. Rosenberg.
There's, there's one caller who's jumped on, and so I'd like to check and see if they're calling about the budget.
Absolutely.
And that's the caller who, whose number ends in 58, are you calling to address the proposed budget?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and address and address your comments.
Sure. My name is Julie Schofield. I live on Lake Avenue here in Stanton, Virginia. And, you know, I am not a budget expert. I have not had the opportunity to really dive deep into the workings of this Stanton City budget, but, you know, I really wanted to take a moment to express that with some of my concerns and some of my priorities, since this is the opportunity to do so. So I appreciate having that opportunity tonight. I'm one of the individuals, maybe kind of rare, that don't believe that we should be reducing taxes at this point in time. I am a property owner. I have a modest home here in the city of Stanton. I pay attention to the assessed tax rate. I pay attention to my taxes. But frankly, I believe that a lot of the property owners here in Stanton, we've got a significant middle class and upper class, are not going to notice their increased assessment or the increased burden of some taxes. Now, I believe in progressive taxation. I certainly think the wealthiest among us should be paying more than folks that are living close to the poverty line. But I do not think we should reduce the tax rate any further. I believe we should continue to generate revenue and that we should put those revenues to good use for all citizens of the city. So that's the first point I wanted to make about taxation. The second thing is that, you know, if I'm going to be willing to pay these taxes, I want the council to reflect some of the priorities of the citizens of our city. For me, that's not an expansion of a jail. It is not golf courses. I think even the existing jail budget is, you know, incredibly burdensome. I really feel like we have to look at all opportunities to find alternatives to incarceration and to address this jail issue and concern around the expansion. So, you know, I want to be clear, those are not my priorities. So, you know, I want to be clear, those are not my priorities. My priorities are the city's schools and education. My priorities are the library. My priorities are assuring safe drinking water and a sound sewer system. You know, my priorities are around protecting health and human services of people in our community. And I also wanted to use this opportunity to say I am very disappointed that the city council doesn't pay more attention to environmental concerns. I think this change in the recycling proposal has kind of been sprung on us. I'm not sure a lot of people have the opportunity to really examine what's being proposed regarding recycling. I've been a strong advocate for curbside recycling and was very discouraged when we had to eliminate plastic recycling and even the fact that glass just gets ground up and thrown into the, into landfill. I'd like to see the city invest more in really protecting the environment, in exploring innovative approaches to a full array of recycling. I like what I've seen about the recycling center at Gypsy Hill Park, but I would add that to curbside recycling, not get rid of curbside recycling. And I would prefer my taxes go to supporting those kinds of services. And at the same time around, the recycling programs in particular, I want to say that they need to be coupled with community education. And I mean aggressive community education, not just people who are aware enough of these concerns to go searching the website to find out about the recycling program, but I mean outreach on a regular basis to community members so that we can have greater, you know, participation in recycling programs, both curbside and potentially this new site that's being considered. So again, just to summarize, I'm opposed to reducing the tax rate. I think we need to generate this revenue, but my priorities are schools, education, library, public works, water, sewer, recycling, and really helping provide healthy human services for the most vulnerable of our residents. So thanks for this opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. All right. With that, the public hearing is now closed. Again, there will be no action taken on the budget tonight. That was simply a public hearing to be able to hear from our citizens. So thank you. That leads us to item number D, a public hearing of a franchise ordinance for easement for electrical equipment and facilities across five hundred North Augusta Street. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Jeff Johnston, the city's public works director, will present this item.
And we're members of council. It's great to be here. At five hundred North Augusta Street, which is the fire station, there is a need to route electrical lines across the corner of the back parking lot to accommodate in a utility pole that is being removed as part of the Central Avenue Streetscape project. So as we always do, when there is a need for someone to use land above, on or below city property, we advertise the opportunity for a franchise agreement, and we received one proposal.
The envelope, please. Thank you. It's my turn.
Give the coroner.
Okay. All right. So I will, I have the city attorney here to make sure that I'm doing everything properly. I will open all bids received for the easement franchise, and we have this one received from Mr. Blair, can you, can you come to the dais, please? Because I don't, it's my understanding I can just minimize the amount that I read. Do I need to do that? All right. I do not need to give the amount. I was looking for that. Our city attorney said that I can merely state that the Virginia Electrical and Power Company of Virginia Public Service Corporation, doing business in Virginia, is Dominion Energy Virginia, with its principal office in Richmond, Virginia, has presented a bid, and I do not need to read the bid.
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. So that's the summary. Are there any other bids to be offered?
No, ma'am.
No more envelopes? So I will now declare the bidding closed. I will now conduct a public hearing. I'll bang the gavel. Anyone for or against, please come forward or call in, and once I hit the gavel a second time, that'll close the public hearing. With that, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Rosenberg?
We'll run through again.
Hang in there with us, everyone. Thank you for your patience.
The caller whose number ends in eight-eight, are you calling to address the proposed franchise agreement? The caller whose number ends in seven-three, are you calling to address the proposed franchise agreement? The caller whose number ends in five-eight, are you calling to address the proposed franchise agreement? We have no further callers.
All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address this matter? Right. Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. All right, so...
Madam Mayor, can you make a motion?
I was just getting ready to say that. Vice Mayor Robertson?
I move that city council adopt the franchise ordinance as presented, granting to Dominion Energy, a franchise for an easement to place electrical equipment and other facilities across city-owned property located at five hundred North Augusta Street, as set forth in the ordinance and annexed franchise agreement.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Claffey.
Second.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if the clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone's patience. This is only the second time I've had to do this, and Mr. Blair, we were all legal, all good, and I didn't think you guys wanted me to read all five pages.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So that concludes the public hearings. The next item is item E, a consideration of a request by Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity for the waiver of fees related to the construction of four new homes on Stafford Street. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I briefed council during the work session earlier this evening, this is a request from Habitat for Humanity seeking the waiver of or exemption from water and sewer connection and facility fees, as well as building permit fees. Provisions in the city code provide for exemptions from these fees upon the satisfaction of three criteria. The first criterion is that the organization has a 501(c)(3) exemption recognized by the Internal Revenue Service. The second is that the project provides homeownership to residents within the city classified as low and moderate income individuals. And the third is that the organization administering the program requires the homeowners to contribute a minimum of two hundred hours in the construction of the subject residence. Habitat for Humanity has provided documentation to demonstrate that the organization satisfies all three of these criteria and that it is eligible for the exemption from or wa, exemption from or waiver from the fees. In this particular instance, the request concerns four single-family residences to be constructed, the, the fees to be waived are estimated at four hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand four hundred per unit for the water connection and facility fees, approximately twenty-five hundred dollars per unit for the sewer connection and facility fees, and two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars in the aggregate for all four units. Ms. Beauregard, I believe in this case, we actually have at your place, from her, a revised motion. Instead of the motion that is in the briefing to pick up a few sections of the city code that were omitted from the original agenda briefing, and I note that the representatives of Habitat for Humanity, Mr. Arrow, Arrowwood, and Mr. Barton are present in chambers. If council members have any questions?
Thank you. We do have the revised motion, so thank you. All right. Are there any questions by council members?
This is Carolyn Doll.
Councilmember Doll.
I think just for clarification for our citizens, the total that we are, they're requesting that be waived is about eighteen thousand three forty-five, if I'm not mistaken.
The, the final fees will be determined by the Community Development Department based on the specifics of the particular connections to be made. So the figures that we've provided to you are an average typically seen for residential units, single-family dwellings, and will be, with the authorization from council, will be finally determined by the Community Development Department.
But that's a, you know, just for those who can't add all that in their head, I want to just give them kind of a total, you know, give or take a few.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you care to address the council?
Well, let's see, by, what city manager said that was an estimate of forty-four hundred per address in this case, and obviously it varies on each construction based on square footage of the house, including decks and entire living area, so it's hard to give a specific amount, you know, ahead of time. So, yes, but we appreciate anything you can do.
All right. Well, thank you. Are there any questions by council members? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Holmes.
I move the city council pursuant to the Stanton City Code Section thirteen point five point oh six oh and thirteen point four oh point oh three oh thirteen, thirteen and fifteen, ten and one twenty approve the waiver of city-imposed water and sewer connection I can hear twice. I, I have building permit fees associated with the construction by Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity of single home lots of C, D, H, and J as shown on the attached subdivision plot entitled Platt, showing boundary lines adjustments dated February second, two thousand and twenty-one, which was, has been approved by the city subdivision agent.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Darby.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if the clerk will please call the roll.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for all of your work for our community. So, and that takes us to the next item. That's item F, a consideration of action concerning uncodified emergency ordinance. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we discussed during the work session, we had provided to you several alternatives concerning the possible action on council's continuity of government ordinance, which is referred to on the agenda as the uncodified emergency ordinance. There are a range of options available to you during the work session. You heard from Dr. Laura Carnegie of the Central Shenandoah Health District concerning the current conditions in Stanton and the surrounding area, and we broke off just as we were going to hear from Mr. Blair, the city attorney, about provisions of the state budget, which come into play here as you consider what action you may possibly take. And so after you hear from Mr. Blair, I think council can engage in a discussion about what action it may wish to take, and then we can help you if a consensus emerges with an appropriate motion.
All right. Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks and councilors. What I would like to do, because there are a lot of moving parts that go into this, and if you will indulge me, I want to go back and have a very brief recent history lesson so that I hope that it can be explanatory for everyone on the council. As you recall, last February and March, the scourge of COVID started to hit our state, our Commonwealth, as well as the city of Stanton. And when a, when a, an emergency occurs, the first aspect, and this was an emergency due to the contagious disease aspect, the first aspect in local government is to declare the emergency. And city manager Rosenberg declared the emergency on March sixteenth of last year. On March eighteenth, the city council of Stanton ratified city manager Rosenberg's declaration of emergency. And they adopt, and, and in your packet, you saw that they have, the, the council ratified that declaration of emergency, and it remains in effect to today. The declaration of emergency is a different proposition from the uncodified ordinance. In this history lesson, what, what I want to go back to is how Stanton and other cities and counties in the Commonwealth ended up with these uncodified ordinance. When COVID certainly became evident that it was going to be a pandemic and was going to disrupt operations, both in the private and public sectors, the Freedom of Information Act of Virginia presented a problem, and that problem simply was that if a public body, such as the Stanton City Council or the School Board or Planning Commission, did not want to meet in person, the Freedom of Information Act did not provide an avenue for that. The only emergency of, the only emergency ability to meet remotely rather than in person that the Freedom of Information Act provided for was to address the emergency. But for instance, you couldn't, as a council, back in March of two thousand and twenty, per the Freedom of Information Act, have met remotely to discuss what you just discussed earlier, which were franchise agreement and some land use matters. Freedom of Information Act, as it was written at the time, only permitted you to address the emergency in your business. So a group of local government attorneys got together across the state, and Mr. Gwen was one, I was one as well, and, and we have a, a listserv, and we also have organizations that we have made phone calls and conference calls on. And each locality that wanted to have their meetings, not in person, but remotely, to discuss ordinary council business, had to pass the uncodified emergency ordinance, and that... And that is what we are talking about tonight, the uncodified emergency ordinance. And the reason that that had to be adopted again was if the council wanted to meet to conduct its regular business, the Freedom of Information Act didn't provide that avenue. But passing the uncodified ordinance did, and that is exactly what the City Council of Stanton did last year. Now, earlier today, and and I've provided copies on on the dais for anybody in the public, what happened at that point, and and as you can recall, for our history lesson, everybody was sort of scrambling. No matter what your lot in life was, you didn't know quite what to do, and that included the Virginia General Assembly and the governor. So when local government attorneys and the Virginia Municipal League and others brought this to the state legislature's attention, the governor, in last year's budget, which is a two-year budget and will run through June 30 of 2022, proposed an amendment. And that amendment to the budget has the force of law, and it allows any public body to convene remotely to conduct its ordinary affairs of business. And so the uncodified ordinances, which were adopted again in Stanton, when I was in Charlottesville, the council adopted one, I know many localities adopted them because of FOIA, this budget amendment provides that power, that the uncodified ordinance is the reason for its existence was providing until this budget amendment came into effect. Now, the uncodified ordinance still provides that, and it is still legal to have one. But what I want to make clear is that through this budget amendment, the state now, until June of 20, June of June 30 of 2022, as long as Governor Northam's Declaration of Emergency is in effect, each public body has the ability to make its own decision whether to meet remotely or not. And if it chooses to meet remotely, it does so without violating the Freedom of Information Act. And I get that this is this sounds, I'm sure, very confusing, and it is confusing. But again, I want to try to make this clear, which is, again, the Declaration of Emergency passed at the local level in March of 2020 is not the the uncodified ordinance that was also passed has no relation, it does not affect that Declaration of Emergency. If the council want and and eventually, I I hope the council will be able to repeal the Declaration of Emergency once the conditions giving rise to it have subsided. But the uncodified ordinance does not, whatever you do with it tonight, does not affect that Declaration of Emergency. The uncodified ordinance and and Mr. Rosenberg and I talked tonight, what we also want to make clear is you have a number of options before you. But what we want to make clear is that this state budget amendment, regardless of what the council decides tonight, each public body, whether it be the Planning Commission, the EDA, the School Board, each public body decides for itself if it wants to have remote meetings to conduct its business. The uncodified ordinance, which again was adopted before this budget amendment, it makes it sound like the council will make that decision for public bodies, but this state budget amendment overrides that and gives each public body their own ability to decide if they want to meet remotely and if they want to conduct their affairs remotely. So long as Governor Northam's Declaration of Emergency remains in effect. And Mr. Rosenberg and I, again, we talked this afternoon, and he wanted me to provide this. And and again, I understand it's a bit of a history lesson, and it's confusing, so I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Rosenberg? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that the uncodified emergency ordinance, number 2020 dash 04, that was adopted by City Council, March 24, 2020, and the uncodified emergency ordinance, number 2021 dash 06, that was adopted by City Council on February the 11, 2021, be and are hereby repealed in their entirety.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Council member Claffey.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll.
Council member Doll.
So we we heard from Dr. Corningay this evening, and she said that social distancing, wearing masks, and in fact, working virtually should continue because we are not at anywhere near herd immunity. So in the face of the expert, and it's not just her, it's the it's the State Health Department, the CDC, so we're just going to ignore all of the experts because some of us know better, or what? I I don't get it.
All right, any additional comments? I will state that Dr. Corningay also added that there has not been a surge in the state of Virginia. All right, I'll ask.
I I I need to clarify that. There is a 21.6% increase in our seven-day trend in our health district, and you can verify that on the website.
I'm just going by the presentation. All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Oh.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
The motion carries with a four to three vote.
All right, thank you. And the next item is item G, a discussion of council procedure memoranda and introductory remarks concerning matters from the public. Now, I will say that I asked that the council procedure memoranda be added to the agenda, but at this time, I'll ask that that be tabled.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that the discussion of council procedure memoranda be postponed to a date to be determined by the mayor in consultation with the city manager.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second by council member Holmes. Any further discussion? I'd like to state that I'm I've asked that this be tabled because it will be a very lengthy conversation, and since we have our new city attorney, I would like to offer him the opportunity to go through each and every one of the procedures to review with the council, and we will discuss this at length at a future work session meeting. All right, if the clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
The motion carries with a five to one vote. I'm sorry. Six to one vote.
All right, thank you. This means we still have the introductory remarks concerning matters from the public. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item is on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Mead. My understanding is that Mr. Blair earlier today circulated to council a the most recent draft of a revised version of these introductory remarks for council's review, and I'm sure that he's available to answer questions, and perhaps Ms. Mead has some issues that she cares to address.
Mr. Blair, if you could come to the podium. Councilmember Mead, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I I put this on the agenda specifically, well, for two reasons. One, to seek clarification of the standards and authority that are implied in Rule Number Four, which which talks about uncivil and courteous and use of profanity and too personal. Is there a is there a a resource somewhere that that provides for, you know, the definition of what is civil and courteous, you know, like Grover's Guide to Good Manners, or Jane Austen's Guide to Good Manners? What, you know, what what is the authority that we are using to to determine what is or is not courteous? And and can we actually have, can we cut off people on the phone simply because a a member of city council decides that it doesn't meet their own standards for civility and courtesy? And my question to you, Mr. Blair.
Okay, I I wanted to make sure. What I would say to that is, when I read it, it says, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. And that is an expectation that you can state for the call. Concerning the enforcement of that, the standard, the legal standard, is is somebody's behavior being disruptive to the meeting and to the orderly conduct of the meeting. And that comes from a Fourth Circuit case, Steinberg versus the Chesterfield County Planning Commission. Now, to answer your question, Counselor Mead, I do not believe that I would advise anybody to cut off anyone because there was a an individual determination of what is civil and courteous. However, I do believe that it is within the council's right to ask that the expectation be that every speaker be civil and courteous.
Thank you. I'm familiar with that Chesterfield County case. It was cited previously by our interim city attorney, and it was, I believe, 15 years ago. Am I correct that that took place?
If I'm if I'm not mistaken, it was 2008.
Okay, thank you.
If if I may, Mayor.
Yes, please.
At the last meeting, I know there was some, there were some questions about all of this, and I, what I have done and what I would advise the council to to adopt is to actually vote and adopt this as your procedure. I know, I think that's been an issue, but I think it is important that the council adopt this rather than it just be the mayor making a statement. And the reason I think it's important is because you will see that I have placed under item number one, the procedure, that if somebody goes over their time limit, what what the procedure is. And I believe it's important that it's a council policy because I believe that ultimately, if this were ever challenged on a First Amendment basis, the entire council would be named in a lawsuit. You act as a body, even though it might be the mayor cutting you off, cutting a speaker off. I think the council as a whole would probably, if there was a lawsuit, be named. I can't guarantee that. But it is important, I think, for the procedure to be spelled out and voted upon because as long as there is a consistent procedure, and as long as it is consistently enforced, the five-minute time limit, that is what is called a time, manner, or place restriction on the First Amendment. And the Steinberg case and their other cases clearly allow any governing body to set a time limit. The the key, though, is that you have a policy and that it is consistently enforced. So when you read this, this language, it talks about, at the end of the five-minute mark, the mayor will then, if you continue to speak, the mayor will ask you to stop speaking. Then if you continue to speak, the mayor will again ask you to stop. But if you then continue on speaking, the mayor then has the right, per this script, and what will be if the council chooses to adopt as a policy, can have you charged with disorderly conduct of the meeting. And again, you're you're offering two warnings per this policy to say, I'm sorry, your time limit's up. And if the speaker then continues to speak, there is the option to look at a disorderly conduct charge. I think, again, as an attorney, I think it's always a great idea to have your process spelled out in public so that everybody knows it, that it's out there in the public, and as long, again, as it's consistently enforced, this, the federal courts have ruled and the Supreme Court has ruled that time, manner, and place restrictions on a limited public forum are constitutional. The second aspect that I had added to this was, there had been some question, I think, at the last meeting about personal attacks. And again, there is case law concerning this. There's a case out of Virginia Beach, and the Attorney General, and a federal case from '01, Bach versus the Virginia Beach School Board, and the Attorney General of Virginia in 2016 issued an opinion that said, you can't have a policy that prohibits personal attacks when it relates to the performance of official government duties or your 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 official role. And so I've tried to clarify that, that again, a personal attack, which has nothing to do with with your role as a government official. For instance, if you said, boy, Counselor X is something about their hair color or some some remark that really has nothing to do with their performance as a government official, it would be constitutional for the mayor to say, I'm sorry, that's out of order. We don't permit personal attacks. But if somebody comes to the podium and says, Vice Mayor Robertson, I really think that fire marshal idea is horrible, that cannot be banned constitutionally because, again, that's relates to his official role as a counselor. And so I thought it was important, considering there was a question at the last meeting, to clarify what personal attacks mean. And it does not include any any criticism of a government official for the performance of their official duties.
Are there any questions?
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll.
Council member Doll.
Mr. Blair, how how will we, how will we ascertain or be reassured that this will be done equitably? That people will be called out of order equitably, like not just some people and not others?
Well.
Do we have any assurance of that?
I I do not have an assurance of that. I I don't think there's any assurance that can ever be given. However, the mayor is the presiding officer of the city council meetings, and it is the mayor's duty to equitably and legally enforce these rules. And that, again, I can't assure you that there's some legal fallback, but the fallback is the election of the mayor, and the mayor is the presiding officer of the Stanton City Council, and the mayor therefore would enforce these these rules.
Mayor, this is Brenda Mead.
Council member Mead.
The other thing I requested when I placed this on the agenda was that the the penalty for for breaking the mayor's rules would be explicitly outlined in in her verbal warning to people so that when people weigh the the, you know, doing the crime versus doing the time, that they know exactly what they're, you know, up against. So I appreciated your adding that verbiage about being subject to up to $2,500. So I appreciated your adding that verbiage about being subject to up to $2,500 of fines and as much as a year in jail.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yes, are we ready for...
I just wanted to clarify that there is not necessarily an updated version. However, there's a second version that was put out today.
Correct. And based on your repeal of the uncodified ordinance, you can, right now, there would not be phone calls permitted to city council. The version that Counselor Holmes requested, I guess, was at 4:00 a.m. this morning.
It's just getting started.
I was going to say, man, you talk about a dedicated counselor. There you go. But that version I presented, I think, today after receiving Counselor Holmes' email, but I sent one earlier that did not have the phone call. And based on your decision to repeal the emergency ordinance, there wouldn't be phone calls coming in. So you can either approve the one that I sent yesterday or the one that I sent today based on Counselor Holmes' email.
Okay. I would like to state that the rules that had been read before, they were drafted by a previous legal counsel and were read by a previous mayor. So this is just a matter of fine tuning it and having a vote on the rules in relation to matters from the public.
Correct. This would make this, there would be an official council vote for this. And again, that makes it, per the city charter, the council makes its rules and bylaws, and this would become a rule of the council.
Okay. Also, I'm not in favor of listing the penalty. By stating the code, I believe, is enough. I do not feel that we need to address the penalty because at the end of the day, that will be up to the courts.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Oaks, I think people should know. I don't think you should expect a citizen to know what the code is. And so I think it's important to be explicit if you're going to threaten them.
I'm not threatening anyone.
If you're going to threaten them with arrest.
Not threatening anyone.
That you should include the verbiage about what penalty they may face if they fall afoul of your rules.
Well, ignorance of the law is no excuse. Also, it is up to the judge to determine that.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'd like to make a motion, move that the Stanton City Council adopt the introductory remarks concerning matters from the public without provisions for remarks made by telephone and removing said statement, a violation of Virginia Code 18.2-415A2, can result in penalties of up to one year in jail and/or a fine of up to $2,500.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councilmember Claffey has seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dahl. Why are we not including the phone because, or some electronic means? Because we have elderly and disabled people who cannot physically attend the meeting, no matter what you want to do to bully them. And they should be allowed to call in or Zoom in or whatever and be able to speak at public hearings and matters from the public. That's just not right.
All right, well, the elderly have been able to speak to us through coming to the council meetings in years past. And now, more than ever, with social media and email and phone calls, they're still able to communicate with us. And since we...
What about the deaf?
All right.
All of these people have the right to be heard, not just by sending you an email because they're too disabled and medically fragile to come down to the meeting.
Well, I would hope from 2014 to 2020, our deaths were not ignored in the city of Stanton, that we were including everyone. And it's my understanding from our city attorney, Mr. Blair, now that the uncodified emergency ordinance has been eliminated, that takes the issue of calling in off the table.
So you're saying that we spent $200,000 updating the technology in the council chambers that would allow the elderly and disabled and deaf to participate? And we're going to ignore that and just waste that money? And we're going to tell those people, "You don't count. If you can't come down, then tough, we don't even want to hear from you." And that's what this is...
It's never been the history of the council to ignore anyone.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead. I hear many people who say they are being ignored. They request meetings and can't get meetings. They send emails and don't get responses. I hear from many people that that's the case. And so I think having this opportunity to call in to city council meetings has been an important tool for citizens to communicate.
Once again, the uncodified emergency ordinance has been repealed. And I believe I know which situation you're referring to, Councilmember Mead, and you are incorrect.
That's not what the citizens tell me.
No, I'm sorry, you are incorrect.
Mayor Oaks, I'm sorry, but...
We can have a discussion about this at the appropriate time, but you are incorrect. I will ask Councilmember Holmes.
I agree with Brenda and Carolyn. We put in these TVs and all this equipment. Why can't we let people still call in? I don't understand that. I mean, like they said, everybody cannot come in here. I mean, even if you look at this, how many people can you get in here? You know, I mean, this is not going to go away, even if we do have people in council. So we shouldn't, we should not do away with Zoom and not do away with the calls in.
Well, that's already been determined.
Well, yeah, I know the Zoom, as far as our meeting goes, but as far as letting our citizens call in, I think that's crazy not to exclude them.
But that's already been determined when the uncodified emergency ordinance was repealed.
Oh, so you don't want anybody to call in? You want to make sure they come down here?
The practice that this council has honored for many years will continue to be honored. And we have many ways of communication, and we are more than happy to listen to our citizens.
Just not using technology that costs us $200,000.
Well, we will...
And it's not just the elderly and disabled. It is young parents with young children who can't be dragging them down here, kids on school nights and all of that. And you're saying, "We don't care."
Well, I would assume...
You are saying, "You don't care about those people."
Okay. Councilmember Dahl, I assume that councils from years gone by would have cared about parents of young children as well. This council is following the tradition of having people come to the council to address the council. And we will utilize the technology that has been placed in the chambers.
Just not for the people.
Again, we are following...
We didn't, if we'd have had this technology 20 years ago, we'd have been using it. Because that's what constituents need. They need to be able to contact us.
All right, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
No.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
The motion carries with a four to three vote.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is item H, which is, let me go back here.
Fire marshal.
Yeah, I've got it. Let's see here. "A discussion and consideration of authorization of Stanton Fire Marshal and Designee to exercise police powers." Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Again, this item is on the agenda at the request of Vice Mayor Mark Robertson. As we discussed during the work session, state law authorizes council to provide authority to the city's fire marshal and the fire marshal's designee to exercise the same police powers as a law enforcement officer, including the use of a firearm. And where council provides that authority, the individual is so authorized or required to complete a course for fire marshals with police powers designed by the Department of Fire Programs in cooperation with the Department of Criminal Justice Services and approved by the Virginia Fire Services Board. So with the appropriate authorization, the fire marshal and the fire marshal's designee would have responsibility for the investigation and prosecution of all offenses involving hazardous materials, fires, fire bombings, and bombings, attempts, or threats to commit such offenses, false alarms relating to such offenses, and possession and manufacture of explosive devices, substances, and firebombs. We've talked previously about how responsibility for the investigation and prosecution of these crimes is currently shared and coordinated between the Police Department and the Fire Rescue Department. And there is included in the materials a draft resolution. There is not in your agenda briefing a suggested motion because we were not anticipating that this would be on the regular meeting agenda for consideration. But I do understand that Mr. Blair has provided to council members a proposed motion if it is council's desire to move forward with the item at this time. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilmember Dahl.
So even though we heard in our work session that there would be about a $3,000 startup cost, it was also already a request for a deputy fire marshal in excess of $91,000. So is this the future? Is this like you get your foot in the door so that you can, is this the time that we want to spend this money when both the fire chief and the police chief said it was working? So we're going to spend $100,000 just because? Is this a job for some friend or something? What, I don't understand why we're doing this now.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Councilman Dahl, this, as stated during the meeting...
That's Counselor Dahl.
Counselor Dahl, as I said earlier, the chief said that there would be a $3,000 startup fee. Perry Weller is currently the fire investigator. She, the chief of fire, is currently also listed as a fire marshal through his title. Perry Weller will be the fire marshal investigator, and he currently has a salary. The chief has a salary. I don't know where you're coming up with $91,000, but...
Well, please read your budget material. You'll see it.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson, or hold on.
Okay.
Time out, guys. Councilmember Holmes.
I'm a little confused about how this all came about as far as, you know, because normally, Mr. Rosenberg is in charge of city employees. And shouldn't this stuff go through Mr. Rosenberg instead of going through one of us? Because Steve works for us, but they all work for Steve.
But Terry, I will give you a real quick answer, then Mr. Blair will. But I mean, Stanton City Code and Title 27 of the Code of Virginia explicitly gives that power to individual entity bodies of council. Mr...
Yeah, I just came up because I did want to clarify that. And Counselor Holmes, you are correct that the city charter and Virginia's form of local government, typically, these matters go through the city manager. But for whatever reason, the General Assembly on this particular grant of authority does place it, it does need a vote from city council. The city manager cannot act unilaterally to provide this power. So it does require a vote of council to authorize a fire marshal.
I understand that, and I'm not arguing with that. But what I'm saying is, you know, shouldn't this been presented to Steve when then Steve presented to us? You know, I mean, normally, you know, we don't go to, like, the fire chief, or we don't go to the police chief and conduct those kind of businesses. We go through Steve, and Steve goes to them. And that's what I don't understand. I mean, I feel like that we undermined Steve's position as their boss, you know?
I disagree, Terry, totally. Steve is the city manager. He can hire and fire, but explicitly because of state code and Stanton City Code, that power is invested upon this city council.
I'm not arguing with that. I'm just arguing about the way it went about. I'm not saying, I mean, you know, I'm just saying, you know, that Steve, all the department heads are responsible to Steve, and all the city employees are responsible to Steve. He's responsible to us, and, you know, but we shouldn't be going, we're messing up the chain of command by going through other people, you know? I mean, I'm not arguing about having the right to do this. I think that's, it's fine. But I'm just saying that, you know, we need to make sure that we're not creating all these different lines of communication because it can get very confusing.
I understand what you're saying, but I hope you understand as well that I went to Mr. Rosenberg. He gave me an answer. I wasn't satisfied with that answer. And I think that because of what the power is that invested in this city council, I decided to bring it before this city council. And that's the reason. I mean, I'm just telling you point blank like it was. Can I make a motion?
This is Carolyn Dahl.
Councilmember Dahl.
I'd like to point out once again that I thought Mr. Robertson was a pharmacist. I wasn't aware that he was an expert on fire marshal or appropriate actions in good governance. I highly recommend that you read how that works effectively. And it has a whole lot to do with communication and, like Terry said, chain of command. You are just iterating the whole process.
Counselor Dahl, I can assure you, you are correct. I am a pharmacist. But as a councilman, just like you are a counselor lady, I did my homework. I read up on the Fourth Amendment. I read up on, after talking to the state fire marshal, I read up on both of the cases. I went ahead and I've talked to several city chiefs of police about how it's working with them and taking it all into account. And then talking to our fire chief, talking to our new city attorney, I felt that this was the best way for this city to go. And I brought it before this council. And I'm simply asking the council to take a look at that motion.
Right.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I'd like to make a motion that Stanton City Council adopt the resolution authorizing the Stanton Fire Marshal and Designees to exercise police powers and to authorize the Stanton City Manager to administratively approve an interdepartmental memorandum of understanding to implement the provisions of the resolution.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilmember Darby.
I second that.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion?
This is Carolyn... Go ahead.
Councilmember Mead.
Thank you. I think this is a solution looking for a problem.
Yep.
I think it was the inappropriate insertion of a council member into the day-to-day management of the city. I believe it undermines the authority of the city manager, and I believe this will encourage employee... encourage employees to go around the city manager and come to city council for redress whenever they don't like a decision that's been taken.
Councilmember Doll.
I would like to add to that, that we've seen what happens when this kind of activity goes on in our school board some years back.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Ms. Mead?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
Oh.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Ms. Doll? Ms. Doll? Councilmember Doll?
I unmuted and said no.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
The motion carries with a four to three vote.
All right. Thank you. Next is matters from the city manager, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one item to share with you this evening. And I'm looking to the back of the room. I see Jeff Johnston in the back, and this is a happy story. Well, maybe not a happy story, but it's a positive story about Public Works employees that came to my attention earlier today. And I just wanted to share with you briefly, and I'll just read from, from this email. Recently, several members of the refuse crew, John Fisher, Ethan Hensley, and Todd Phillips, discovered during their regular refuse route an elderly citizen who had fallen in her front yard. She had a large contusion on her forehead and was conscious but incoherent. One of the crew checked the front door to see if there was anyone else at home, but there was not. The team called EMS and stayed on scene with her until the EMS team arrived and took over. While none of the crew asked for recognition for this good deed, they went above and beyond. Their efforts and dedication to the community they serve are sincerely appreciated. And so I just, you know, wanted to have the opportunity to share that with council. It's, I think, representative of the quality of the employees that we have working for this organization, and I'll ask Mr. Johnston to convey my personal thanks to these three employees when he next sees them. Thank you.
And ours as well.
Please pass it along. Thank you so much.
He just needs eight more employees like that.
Yeah. All right. Is that it, Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the next item is matters from the public. I will go ahead and read the, the rules for matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters From the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about, about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. Number one, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium. If you still continue to speak, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section 18.2-415A2. This is a time for, this is a time for us as councils simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you seek information, you may mention it during your remarks, and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. We ask that you direct your comments to council as a whole and not to identify members of council or to identify employees of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, email, or mail. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the council as a whole. We expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the City of Stanton, and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our clerk of council, Ms. Smith, from our interim clerk of council, Ms. Smith. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public. All right. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Bowen Jennings, 332 Charlotte Street. I got two items I won't bring up. First, this town lost an outstanding citizen, Jim Kilikin. Jim and me have been buddies since, for nearly 70 years. And he was principal of Bestewell School, and he really, the kids really loved him. I worked with him on a lot of projects over there, and he was the type of guy who put the time in the hall, worked talking to the kids, pushing reading. He had, he had a reading program. All the kids read books and he rewarded them, and he was just a great guy, and this city lost one hell of a spine citizen. I just want to thank you for bringing that up. And another thing is the entrance signs to Stanton. I first retired and come home in 75 and had a two-by-four with a license plate on saying Stanton, Virginia. So I went out and got on my hobby horse and started looking in the, getting an attractive entrance sign. And we came up with one, and, and anyway, we got the signs up and everything, but over the years, for some reason, they hadn't been kept up. We need to have flower beds and make this city attractive. Entrance sign to a town really means a lot. It shows its pride and everything. Coming in on 250 down there, it's just a plain sign sticking up, no landscaping and nothing. We got upper priorities and get our entrance signs updated and, and looking halfway decent. My brother and me took on the one over at, at the bottom of Hampton Street and Greenville Avenue, and we put up a little money and got mess to landscape it, but it hadn't been kept up. It's grown up, and it really looks terrible. So I like to see the city being, we're getting, getting our park back into operation and everything, get our horticultures out there and give some help, and get all these entrance signs updated, spring coming on, flowers are blooming, and let's make this attractive, attractive entrance that really makes Stanton stand out. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bowen.
Next speaker from the audience.
Hi, welcome. My name is Cindy Connors. I live at 106A Skyline Avenue. I actually had a lot of things, a few things I wanted to speak about at the microphone tonight, but I'm going to limit it to only one, and forgive me if I haven't had my thoughts organized, but I'm kind of blindsided, confused, and dismayed by the decision to end the ability to call into these meetings. I look around, this is still, we're still in a pandemic, and we can still fit only a handful of people in here. And, you know, I'm one of the people, I'm pretty healthy, and I was willing to risk coming here on a regular basis, and I've spoken at the microphone before. But I am passionately supportive of the right for folks to call in, at the very least, until the COVID pandemic is over, if not longer. The only reason I heard at this meeting as to why you'd end it is because it's not what we did before. It's not tradition. I couldn't care less about that. That kind of tradition is irrelevant. We should be moving into the modern era and giving people more and more ways to access the city council, not fewer ways. And I am a citizen, a voting citizen in Stanton, who has failed to receive an answer to an email to city council. Now, I, you know, I understand sometimes when I write to my senator, they only write back, hey, thanks for writing, but at least I knew they got it when I got that. And when I come to a city council meeting or I call in on the phone, I know you've heard me. I mean, you know, I, I, unless you literally were sitting here, you know, deliberately not listening to me. So, you know, it, there's all kinds of folks that here out there that cannot come for a whole multitude of reasons. You can't possibly list them all. And some, sometimes it's just simply because they don't want to sit through the whole thing, but because they have other things to do. But especially in a, in a pandemic, I ask you to reconsider and give people their full democratic right to voice their opinion. I've always been proud of Stanton and their matters from the public portion. I brag about Stanton having that, but now I'm really disappointed, so I hope you'll reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Niche Narduzi, South Jefferson Street. There were several issues that I would like to address this evening, but I'm going to start with the one that I think is the most egregious display of oppression by this council, seeing as I most likely will run out of time and risk the chance of violating any number of the mayor's ambiguous definitions that will warrant her using her powers of discretion to remove me from the podium, to order our city police to arrest me, charge me with disorderly conduct, and send me to jail, none of which are acceptable actions coming from a mayor merely afraid of hearing the truth. Let's get something straight. Your use of these rules have always been presented to citizens as a threat to discourage dissenting voices. Your eagerness to endow yourself with the power to have citizen residents arrested is simply disgusting. Never has a mayor ever threatened citizens with arrest, a $2,500 fine, and possible jail time for engaging in matters from the public. The mayor mistakes passionate activism for justice and equity as a personal attack. Perhaps that's because she knows that her actions demonstrate her actual obstruction of transparent and accountable governance, which we saw tonight with your vote to end the Emergency Uncomp Act, and which was very upsetting because as someone who is part of the disability community, there are many times when I'm bedridden and housebound and could not come here to have my voice heard. So just keep that in mind, who you're citing. For those reasons, I reject, reject these rules of engagement, which require me to speak in a tone and manner becoming of a beauty pageant queen. To me, it would be disingenuous, as disingenuous as trying to get someone to take a lethal dose of arsenic by saying, try it, you might like it, I added some sugar. See, your tone does not indicate your intent and is not indicative of the impact that you might have. No one should be required to give respect when it has neither been earned nor offered in return, and especially when a leader's actions directly harm community members. Your rules of engagement are born from a white supremacist mindset. Instead of leaning into them to exert whatever power you can garner for yourself, I implore you to open up the dialogue and invite people in instead of trying to shut down commoners that have real grievances. Encourage more community engagement, not less. Make matters from the public more inviting, not more threatening. I would rather my words be honest and direct than appropriately cordial for the sake of saving city council members the discomfort of being called out on their bad decisions, their unbecoming behavior as our city's leaders, or their repetitive statements that reek of racism, misogyny, and ableism. Are citizens going to be labeled uncivil, uncourteous, profane, or disruptive by simply speaking truth to power? Because that is exactly what the mayor wants to be able to do, and that is a direct infringement on our First Amendment rights. On the matter of ending the uncompadred emergency order, I would simply like to remind you that according to the Virginia Department of Health website, higher-risk activities still include in-person gatherings where it is difficult for individuals to be spaced at least, at least six feet apart, and indoor gatherings in small, poorly ventilated spaces. Requiring in-person city council meetings is still a high risk that does not to be enforced on any of our citizens, including other city council members. Instead of chomping at the bit to exert your power over others for petty reasons, you could have taken a more inclusive, accommodating, and quite frankly, forward-thinking approach to dive headfirst into evolving technology, to open up access to local governance, and to encourage engagement of citizens. Instead, your focus has been on returning to in-person meetings. Why? Why is that your priority when Zoom access has proven to be efficient and effective and safe? To be honest, if we had a majority of council that wanted to usher us into new worlds of technology and accessibility, our city would be much better served, but instead, we have a vice mayor that needs to be in the room to size someone up, and a majority of council that seems determined to keep our city from any type of progress. For this reason, citizens demand that council should actually focus on making meetings accessible to the public through live streaming using the full Zoom platform. Onto Vice Mayor Robertson.
Ms. Narduzi, your time is up. Ms. Narduzi, your time is up, and please refrain from making personal attacks with inflammatory comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Crawford, and I'm from Uniontown. I just have a couple of questions for you guys, some suggestions, some clarification-type things. If you're not willing to allow myself or anyone else to call in to see you on video for these meetings, are you willing to open up another room to give us more access to these meetings since we have the technology to do so?
Mr. Rosenberg, can you address her comments after the meeting?
Sure. Yes.
My other question or suggestion to the council is, instead of putting that large lump of money into expanding more jail cells for inmates, why is it not possible to use that same money to create a program so that these people don't become repeated offenders? They have to have something to turn to when they come out. If they don't, they return. So I just feel like the money could be more invested into something else. My last suggestion or comment is the waiver fee for water and sewer for Habitat on Stafford Street for new housing, I'm assuming. Are you willing to do the same for a resident who doesn't have that access? There are houses within this town who don't have proper sewer connection, who were told that they had to pay this large lump fee that a new homeowner had to pay when they bought the land. However, the fee has been waived for Habitat for Humanity. Why can't the fee be waived or lowered for people who have lived on this property for hundreds of years and never were granted access or even thought of for connection for proper sewer? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the council? Hearing none, Mr. Rosenberg, if you'll identify the callers.
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and address and address your comments to council.
Yes, my name is Tim, and I live in Stanton, Virginia. Good evening, city council and Mayor Oakes. I want to first address the lady that, before this last lady had spoken, she has every right to cut you off after five minutes and have you arrested. I did not appreciate you calling her racist, what you said to her. That is unrespectable to a city official. It is really disrespectful to a city official for what you said to her. Now, getting to a point, if we have any hunters listening to the meeting tonight, I want to at least bring up that the Neanderthal that is in office in the White House is trying to ban guns. And if that bill, if that bill passes, then that's going to mean defunding the Police Department. So think of that, the people that are hunting, that are hunters in the state of Virginia. Also, you know why your gas prices are going to go high, going so sky-high? It's because that Neanderthal in the White House killed the Keystone Pipeline. It's because that Neanderthal in the White House killed the Keystone Pipeline and the gas companies. So just everybody think of that, it's why your gas prices are going through the roof, why gas prices and everything are going sky-high. And the comment too, why everything should be opened, yes, everything should be opened, wide open. The CDC, you can't trust the CDC, the National Institute of Health, because Dr. Francis Collins and Dr. Anthony Fauci, flip-flop Fauci, gave $3.7 million to China for the China virus. And there is a judicial watch that is trying to get answers on why they sent $3.7 million, taxpayer dollars of the United States of America, to China. But they won't give the answers. The National Institute of Health, the CDC, and everybody is behind that Wuhan, or excuse me, that China virus. So everything should be open, wide open. The numbers are fludged, and everything is not correct. And you've got a Neanderthal governor that is so stupid. He don't know that, and he's killed high school sports in this area because of that, because he's so stupid. So, and also, you're talking senators? You've got two stupid senators in the White House up there in the Senate, Tim Kaine and Mark Warner, that are for all this stuff, for the Equality Act. So you've got Tim Kaine, who is our state senator, that is in favor of having gay people, transgenders play sports, for transgender boys to play sports. That's how stupid he is. And I'll tell you this, I've got better response from our representative Ben Klein, and also there is a Georgia representative, Marjorie Taylor Greene, that would be a whole lot better in the state senate for Virginia than those two Neanderthals of Tim Kaine and Mark Warner. So I'm just going to say, thank y'all, y'all have a pleasant evening, have a good day.
Thank you. If you can please refrain from making personal attacks or inflammatory comments towards individuals. Next caller.
I'm Constance W. Birch, and I live on Mary Gray Lane. Thank you for taking my call. I was glad to see, well, first, is this going to be the last opportunity that I ever have to call on the phone and to counsel?
Yes, it will.
Ms. Birch, we are not supposed to engage, according to the rules, with conversation. We can certainly give you a call, the city manager can.
Okay, good. I was glad to hear you speak about the Middle River jail situation, but it's the same thing. I have a question, so maybe. I sent an email several months ago to each member of council and to you, Mayor, but I didn't get an answer. And I think you said tonight that you're in favor of having a lobbyist at the state level, and you have formed or agreed on a resolution, but I'd like to know where the council stands on whether or not you want to spend the money to erect a larger addition or a new building of bricks and mortar. And in case you are leaning that way, I don't want to repeat all the, I don't have them at my fingertips, all the numbers that you've already heard, but I think it's not to our credit that the United States and Virginia have one of the highest rates of incarceration in the world. And given the rate of recidivism, we might say that doing the same thing over and over again could say that it's crazy to keep on doing the same thing. Many people are incarcerated for very short amounts of time and don't get any counseling or substance abuse treatment, and they're released and rearrested. And I understand quite a few people in jail are actually awaiting trial, and the reason they're in jail is that they can't raise bond. And I think bond is to make sure that they don't leave the area and they actually show up at their trial. And it's possible that if they can't raise bond, maybe they wouldn't have the means to leave. It just seems like, as you know, there are a lot of other systems that are proposed, and instead of spending money on bricks and mortar, that money could be spent on programs to change some people's lifestyle. And I would like to know how council stands, so I hope someone will call me. I don't know how you do it if you don't ask my phone number, and of course, I don't want to give that over the air. And this may seem a little, well, not as respectful as it should be, but when I was younger and drove, I went to a lot of public meetings, and I'd just like to make a suggestion of why the public comments are at the very end of the meeting, which is often getting late in the evening. Maybe they shouldn't be first, but maybe they could be earlier in the evening in case people wanted to go home, because the council, I mean, forgive me, you're not making a lot of money, but you're getting paid to be there, and you have to stay to the end. So why couldn't you have a public comment earlier in the meeting? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Connie, I believe you have an old email for me. I will give you a call, as I did not receive your other email. All right, Mr. Rosenberg, next caller.
Hi, this is Julie Schofield on Lake Avenue in Stanton, Virginia, calling in. Once again, I have to say, I'm incredibly discouraged and deeply disturbed by actions of city council this evening, and a little bit speechless. But I'm going to say a couple of things here, because I think it's really important that you hear from citizens of the city. I listened to some of the work session this evening, and heard Dr. Laura Cornegate say very, who's the director of the Central Shenandoah Health District, say very clearly that we are still in a pandemic, we still have a declaration of an emergency in the state of Virginia, and that we should still be meeting remotely and staying away from large gatherings and in-person meetings as much as possible until we've reached closer to her immunity, maybe if all goes well with vaccination, maybe if the variants don't take off, maybe by the Fourth of July. It is so deeply discouraging that you would listen to a public health official, nonpartisan public health official, a physician in public health, dedicating her career and the last year of her life to fighting this pandemic, and you would throw out for very clear and concise recommendations. Why? It just baffles me. I can't believe it. And I'm incredibly discouraged that this city council is demonstrating that it doesn't care about the science, doesn't care about public health, just wants to do business the way it wants to do business. And, you know, I'm very discouraged by that, because I am very concerned that's how you approach other issues of concern as well. Secondly, I think that anybody interested in good government should be trying to make city council meetings as accessible as possible for as many members of the public as possible. So through this pandemic, many of us have had to shift how we do business. Many of us have had to learn how to use Zoom and other meeting platforms to conduct our business. We're not going to go back to pre-pandemic ways of doing business. I think it's really clear that from here on out, we're going to be using many of these online platforms to conduct business, because it saves time, because it saves money, and because it provides more people access and voice, more transparency. And that seems to me is what good government is all about, making it as easy as possible for citizens of the city to participate in meetings. So whether there's a pandemic or not, I think the city council should be aired on Zoom. I think people should be able to call in. No one should have to climb down there in person and give up their entire evening. And that's just a matter of being transparent and open and wanting to be accessible to the citizens of Stanton. I am working full-time. By the time Thursday night rolls around, this is absolutely not the thing I want to be spending four to five hours doing. It's great to be able to listen while I'm finishing my dishes, while I'm finishing my work, while I'm taking out my recycling, whatever it is, and still be able to plug in and hear these council meetings, and still be able to have my voice heard if I take the time to call in. And I really hope that city council will reconsider closing the doors to council meetings and making them so inaccessible for so many. The last thing I'm going to say tonight is that on this issue of authorization of the Stanton Fire Marshal to exercise police powers, oh my gosh, I think that is so completely unnecessary and so completely ill-advised. And I'm deeply disturbed at the roundabout ways that this came to the agenda of the city council. I don't believe the Fire Marshal needs to have police powers, and it sounds to me like everything was working fine and dandy before Vice Mayor decided to take some matters into his own hands, likely because of his cronyism and wanting to help yet another friend with business here at the city of Stanton. So again, I think that's another very disturbing decision by the city council, and wanted to make sure that that opinion was on the record this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jennifer Trupier. My address is 14 Frontier Ridge Court, Stanton, Virginia. I'm calling, even though I wrote you earlier today, I am aghast at the decisions you've made tonight, and I will focus on just one of those, and that is, you're preventing participation by so many in our area. I am one of many who are disabled and cherish and value the opportunity to be able to come to you and speak via this telephone connection, to hear that that's going to end tonight, and that my voice and the voice of many others, more importantly, won't be heard, and that's unfortunate. We are living in a time where we've been forced to look at new opportunities, new ways of continuing business. Tradition has gone out the window. Now we've learned that, yes, we can commit our time and our efforts through online communication, Zoom meetings, Google media, any number of ways that business has effectively been carried out. And we're not looking at that. There are people who, in the disabled community, it's not just people who can't walk, there are heart, lung, kidney diseases, there's Crohn's disease, there's blindness, deafness. We have young parents with small children, we have people who are working different shifts, any number of reasons that I haven't begun to enumerate, who are prevented from coming at this specific time and place to address you in those chambers, but still are involved, still want to participate, still want to have the opportunity to be part of the governance, which is what this country is founded on. We have opportunities with decisions like the Fire Marshal or changing how we meet one another that haven't even been looked at. Tradition is fine, but tradition is something that needs to be able to move and change and meet the new criteria. And I'm saddened, deeply saddened to see that this city council, who has opportunities galore, we live in an area where we have Woodrow Wilson Rehab Center, we have the Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind, we have an immense diverse community. And instead of reaching out to them for ideas and novel ways, we could be role models for communities across the country of ways that we reach out to our constituents and find ways to communicate and put our heads together and create new ways of accomplishing things. And instead, we're going by tradition? It's always worked this way, but it doesn't work this way? That's the issue. It hasn't been working. And I hope that sometime I will receive a response to emails that are sent, and I hope that you will reconsider allowing people to come to you via telephone, more especially by Zoom, which we've all become very adept at, and participate, because we do care, because it's an investment in our community. We all form this together. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Lamar Sale. I was calling about the $25 deal the mayor's trying to charge people for calling in. And if you guys have a problem, I'm on your side, and you can try to work it out with the city, and I can back you up. Just call me up, my number's 540-649-0401. We can, I guess you can see the city if that's a problem. I mean, because you can say what you want to say, and that's crazy, to be $20,000 fine from the city that you can't speak up. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
This is Deborah Kushner, North Augusta Street in Stanton. It's really hard to know where to start tonight. I second the opinions of most of the commenters and callers tonight. It does feel like a very momentous night, seeing the last opportunity to phone in, which is highly convenient, not just for me, but for large segments of this community that can't get there, that will never get there now, which feels really sad, both sad and angry, extremely disappointed that rather than include more people's voices, we seem to deliberately be excluding people and their voices. I love the suggestion of the caller who said, maybe comments could be made earlier in the evening, when more people could get there, maybe people's voices could be listened to, maybe they would be influencing city council decisions if people's voices mattered. But it does feel like what city council has done tonight before has done everything in their power to eliminate that opportunity. So I would suggest that the word welcome be stricken from the invitation for people to speak, because this is not a welcoming environment. People aren't being welcomed. People's voices aren't being heard and won't be in the future, far less. The technology is there, we've outfitted the chamber rooms beautifully with CARES Act funding. Will that money be returned? What will it be used for? We've all been waiting for Zoom to happen so that people could watch what's going on there. Citizens have given up their Thursday evenings to get down there and livestream. A lot of the community depends on that. We heard March was when the city would start live streaming. We'll still be waiting, because the technology, we know, is there. It's at your fingertips, you can flip the switch and let people see what's going on. This is a very, very sad evening, and I feel like you're really putting Stanton on the map for aggressive policies. the map for aggressive policies. With every meeting, there seem to be more. It's very sad. That's all.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, this is Sally Berger, live on North Madison Street. I just really cannot believe that you guys are making all council members attend council meetings in person during this time of pandemic. This is cruel, it's dangerous, and totally unnecessary. I'm also vehemently opposed to you eliminating phoning in. This is exactly what's going on in Georgia and around the country, where certain other leaders are taking measures to limit democracy. This bullying by Mr. Robertson and other council members on this and many other things cannot continue. This behavior has never before been witnessed here in Stanton, Virginia, and it cannot continue. We deserve better, and I demand it.
Thank you.
Caller on the line?
Yes.
Please state your name and address and address your comments to council.
This is Chris Davis, I live on Gilmore Street, and just wanted to call in about the decision to not allow council members to participate on Zoom and to not allow comments from the public to be called in anymore, and it's really disappointing to me. Really expect city council and anybody in a position of leadership to set an example as to how the rest of us should behave, and this goes against all guidance that I've heard from anyone regarding the pandemic, and, yeah, I mean, you really, when you set up obstacles to participation, you really tell on yourself. That's all. Good night.
Thank you. Next caller.
That is the last caller.
All right. With that, is the mayor of the city of Stanton, I call this meeting adjourned.